Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start recording. It is time for policy committee. It's four thirty one. Present for this meeting are myself, Michelle Thompson. Introduce yourself Maria.
Maria Parker.
Introduce yourself Lynn.
Lynn Baffin.
Alright, we are in the committee tonight.
I just put uh um her draft.
Alright.
So we're gonna pull this up so you can hit because you don't have a computer. Do you wanna look at that policy and then here is there's no way to I could print it but then her comments aren't gonna come up.
Okay.
But you we can double dip it.
Okay.
That's the only thing.
This is okay.
That's me.
Okay, that's on thirty five forty.
And it is thirty and it is in the file for thirty five forty five so if you wanna look at it another time it's actually in the policy part.
Okay. Okay, well I want to take this little statement and bring clarification to it because I don't think it's very clear in uh so what I've said is in the event an administrator is discussing a situation with a student and the administrator does not initially believe the violation merits a suspension, then another adult may be present during the questioning of the student. I know it's a lot of words but that little statement is very confusing.
Yeah.
Cause I get what they're saying but here I mean if it's gonna merit suspension and they know then another adult shall be present.
Yeah. Right, and I think they're totally fine with that. Their issue is initially they don't and so it could be something that they think they're dealing with a tardy situation and then all of a sudden the kids there's more information occurring and you know there's details and so now they don't have a second person so they were like if we don't have some wiggle room then it's an all or nothing. So I think that we have that but I can take this back to them at the next admin meeting. If you wanna do that that would be well it would be after our board meeting. Do you want me to send it out beforehand and just ask if they're fine with this? I can do that via email?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is we'll move this.
Do you mind highlighting just that section so I know that's the section I'm sending?
Yeah. Yeah, are you okay with me? So we're saying in the event an administrator is discussing the situation with a student suspect and the administrator does not initially believe the violation merits a suspension, then another adult may be present during the questioning of the student suspect. If the violation warrants a suspension either in school or out of school, I rephrase that, then another adult shall be present during the questioning. So we're specifically saying if you know you're gonna suspend that kid, a second adult has to be there.
Right. Right.
Um can I line this out?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. I think I will do that and tag it here.
Yeah.
Just so that you understand why.
Yep, and I'll just print that one part and send it out via email to them so I think that's perfect.
Okay, that's fine. Oops. Alright, so Megan's comments. Where's this one? I don't know how to do this one, sorry.
Okay, so you're just scrolling up your finger.
Wait, I don't know where that comment is.
Oh, so if you go here it'll pop up.
Okay.
So it's taking you if it moves it over it's telling you that's the comment that goes with it. Does that make sense? It'll move over just a slap, just a tap.
Okay, um the mouse won't work on this one. What is she? Okay, and the district is involved in the fact finding. Alright, so let's see here. When a violation of board policy or school rule occurs, the principal or his or her designated may question a potential student victim or student who may have relevant information without prior consent of the parent. If violation warrants consideration of in-school or out-of-school suspension, then another adult shall be present during questioning of the student victim. So she wants us to add in here somewhere and the district is involved in the fact finding? Is that what I'm understanding?
Mm-hmm.
Does she say where?
I think she said I think so and just come back up here. And the district, yeah, I think she says when a violation of board policy or school
Rule occurs.
And the district is involved in the fact finding. So I think what she's referencing is if this was something directly sent to law enforcement but in this situation we're the one doing an investigation.
Well.
So that's what she's delineating out. They said if we're gonna do a follow-up investigation. But then in other situations I feel like she said we still have an obligation to do our due diligence.
Um. So interviews by school administrators. Well, because the interviews are by school administrators, the district is doing the fact finding. So why are we putting this in there?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, you're good. So then the next one she says all this kinda go through it.
Oh.
Thank you, cause I'm just gonna scroll it.
Oh.
Okay.
Was that easier?
I just don't know how to look back. I'm a I'm a Windows gal. All the windows is really annoying, I'm sorry. So.
So then the next one it says may question a potential student victim. She put comma witness or student who may have relevant information without prior consent. So she's suggesting that you put witness there.
Okay.
And then directly after that she's suggesting that you put or other students.
Okay, gotcha.
So this is what she says for the if the violation warrants consideration, that red sentence, she says the sys- system sentence does not make sense to me because it looks like the paragraph is for the situations where we aren't suspecting accusing a particular student of wrongdoing just information gathering. If we are interviewing someone we think we think did something wrong, wouldn't that be the next paragraph suspect? So she's saying that that doesn't go there.
What doesn't go there?
Where if the violation warrants, she's doesn't feel like this sentence falls in this paragraph. She feels like it should be here, which is where you have it already. We have it twice actually.
Oh, okay. So. Strike it?
That's what she's suggesting.
Okay, I'm wondering. Let me do this. That's kind of obnoxious, isn't it? Uh what color can I put it so we know? It's Megan's purple?
Yeah, just a purple. That's fine. It's something different.
Okay, and so then she had us add this, which is purple. I can't look at this stuff. I just wanted to stand out like a mouse. So grab it, where should I sit?
Did you get your haircut?
I did. I like it.
Thank you.
I love that.
Very cute.
Okay, um so added as we're working on policy thirty five forty five.
Okay.
It's okay.
That's I can look at it.
Um it's to add the language from the attorney. Okay, so.
Okay, in this one, this is what she says for the title where it says interviews. This is her note. As I noted in my email for SROs, there is a difference between fact-finding interviews and obtained interrogations because our first paragraph suggests a different type of question, non accusatory. It may be helpful to call it something different such as interrogation or call this interviews and the top fact-finding. So she's suggesting that this is fact-finding by school administrators, interviews by school administrators. So you're delineating a difference is her suggestion.
Okay, and I get that but the first paragraph is about student victims and witnesses and the second paragraph is about suspect students.
And so she said you could put this is just fact-finding, you're just getting information, this is truly interviewing to.
Okay.
With her suggestion.
So. I'm gonna have a hard time with this one. Um cause I keep playing with the mouse trying to think of Maria's computer and it's not. Um so she's saying go fact-finding. Oops, wrong color.
We're in the same. Mine is.
Oh, you're good. Well then it.
They're going.
I think it will be fact-finding interview by school administrators. Okay, we're going through thirty five forty five um and applying legal counsel's um.
This is the one that we thought was a duplicate.
Of forty two ten.
Okay.
Right, right. Okay.
The yeah, but it was forty four ten and this thirty five forty five that we were like do we need to have both?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so then she goes and is fine with all of this. That whole part and then the whole next part.
Okay. No suspension decision. Excuse me. I have. Uh no suspension decision will be made without affording an informal hearing as set forth in district policy. She wants that in the if the violation warrants a suspension.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so um. Oh wait. It's it's okay. An informal hearing?
It's 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 a discussion with the principal essentially with the parents walking through.
Okay, do we do that with in-school as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then never mind. Um we. Do we know the policy number though? Cause she don't.
No, I don't.
So is that just saying that like the principal can't just say you're suspended that it would go to the board first or what does that mean?
It would say that the principal would do an informal hearing with the parents about what happened.
So the principal's here.
Yeah. My assumption is it's thirty five. Thirty or. Or thirty three thirty, student discipline policy. Yeah, it's thirty three thirty. Actually moved that but I wanted to done chat.
Gotcha. Um. I don't like the way it's been. Um an informal hearing will be held um. As set forth in policy thirty thirty.
Thirty three thirty nine. That just means there's a discussion with the family that it had happened. Cause there are definitely certain behaviors that have that that's an automatic, we don't have a choice in statute. So it just means you're going over with parents. So then her next language is for the title. She says you should just say take out interrogation. So it should read interviews and questioning. And she said this is consistent with language in Idaho code, but she doesn't cite the Idaho code. So.
Alright. Okay, which we had already struck out in interrogations.
So then if you go down the end of this paragraph towards the students um school discipline.
So you have to reach the parent before you interview the parents will be informed. The questioning has occurred except in case of safety.
I feel like we're already saying that cause we say we'll make an effort to notify the students in advance unless safety issues are involved. This is just putting the qualifier in there that if they are unable, it's just an additional qualifier.
Right, um I'm trying to find it.
It's right there at the very bottom at the end of involved. That's the where she has it. She'll make an effort to notify students' parent guardian. It's she has it attached to that sentence.
Oh, it's up. Okay, it's up. Got it. Right there. Okay. Alright, when a law enforcement officers are whatever questioning a student victim, witness or suspect, in such instances, school administrator shall make an effort to notify the student's parent, guardian or legal custodian in advance of the interview or interrogation unless safety issues are involved.
And then she should read the district is unable to reach the parent before the interview, the parents will be informed that questioning has occurred except in the case of the safety.
Oh, so she's.
Which is just a reminder that if for some reason you can't ever get like you continue to follow up so they are notified at some point. Again, unless it's a CPS situation.
So just in case I'm not reading this correctly, um if the student needs to be questioned without notifying the parent due to a safety issue, does then that read that then the school will try to reach the parent after the interview has occurred?
If it's a safety situation, so like a CPS and it's a parent, we can't notify parents at all.
Okay, so the kid gets off the bus, hey, you know, the cops were here today. But but you but there's no obligation. What if there's like a uh in in interview that happens due to not a CPS, not.
That would be when they're talking safety, that's the only scenario they're talking about.
So if there's something that seems like um we had a parent here when we were going through this before and she had.
There was a.
Presented like.
Her s- her child was a witness.
Right.
Yeah, then we would for sure call and all of that.
Okay.
And they mean safety, they mean that.
Just the CPS scenario.
Parents are concerned.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
I wish it would just say CPS cause that's what they're talking about.
So if they were concerned about like an immediate threat situation and you know Johnny knew something about Timmy, they would still wait to interview Johnny until they contacted parents or attempted to contact parents? Okay, alright.
Yeah, but if it was Johnny and it was Johnny's parents.
Right, that makes sense.
You wouldn't be able to.
Okay, thank you.
But if there are times when you know it doesn't, when CPS has come out or law enforcement has come out and it's not viable and so then um we can't impede whatever investigation. So there has been scenarios where we can't say anything and then obviously the kid is saying something and
Right.
that we we try to get have the ability, can you communicate, can we communicate to the families?
Right.
But we have to be really, that's a fine line when it's a CPS, safety situation.
Okay, that makes sense.
Things are done mid.
Yeah.
Um so a law enforcement officer's question, student victim. Shall make every effort to notify student's parent guardian or custodian in advance of the interview or interrogations. Um if the either should be a minis- school administrator. Is unable to reach the student's parent before an interview or interrogation, the parent guardian or the custodian will be informed the questioning has occurred unless safety issues are involved. Okay.
I think we needed that before the red school administrator also.
Got it.
Okay, so where it says the results of the parallel so is almost right there. I don't know that you have to add anything but this is just her comment and we've talked about this. The district will complete its own investigation into potential violations of district policy procedures and will determine appropriate sanctions for violations. So the context of that is she said there have been cases where um school districts allowed the law enforcement to take the lead, charges were filed, so they just washed their hands of it, didn't do anything well. So there was they did add consequences but didn't really do any documentation on their own. So they just took what law enforcement said, didn't do any investigation. And then charges were dropped month, two months later, parents came back and said um there's nothing documented. So now my kid's been penalized for something that he wasn't charged with and so then there's been issues with the district and the district got in trouble. So Megan has said on multiple occasions, just because if policy's been broken, you still have to do your due diligence. So.
Okay.
Which I feel like you're saying that a school discipline investigation is not stopped as soon as the school administrator believes that a crime has been committed, they have to do their due diligence.
School discipline investigation under school administrators and criminal investigation by law enforcement should be conducted in parallel rather than manner rather than as a joint investigation. Which the implication is it doesn't stop just because law enforcement takes over, right?
Megan's is more clear.
I apologize.
Is there like you were saying with what Megan's information is there is there something that our administrators have that gives them more detailed clarity on what what that looks like for Megan? Or is that just something that that Megan just has kind of on her own? Or is that something that like our principals have kind of what she?
Yeah, they know if there's something, if there's been some discipline issue that they have to follow policy on what we do so. Um and and if law enforcement gets involved, then that's if it doesn't supplant their own
Okay.
due diligence of due process for that child. I mean before consequences are given, which is they have they have to do their provide due process.
The school administrator shall complete the investigation. Investigation to determine if any violations of policies or procedures occurred. To determine, we're determining a lot here. To determine.
Is that where it might be helpful to add um complete the discipline investigation and documentation? You were talking about making sure it's documented. Would that kind of help make sure that was a documented investigation or is there just like a form that they follow anyway that it's gonna be? Okay.
That's part of the policy.
Uh now that's too.
I would take out the appropriate before the sanctions. So hopefully they're not gonna decide on inappropriation.
Right, right.
I just don't know the word sanctions. I just feel like we follow policy thirty three thirty and outlines what some of those options are. I mean sanctions feels very law enforcement-y.
Correct, um.
Not really school.
Splinter investigation to determine if any violations of policies or procedures occurred and decide.
Consequences?
Con- consequences per policy thirty three thirty.
That's better. So the school administration should complete the discipline investigation, shall determine if any violations of policies or procedures occurred and decided there shall be consequences pursuant to policy thirty-three thirty. Perfect.
So in the next couple of things, um, so you could do your function, anything that says interviews, she, or interrogation, she wants it to say questioning, several of her comments are, she put questioning, questioning.
So I think we're going to change the title. Questionings, okey doke.
Could you just make that all singular, would that mean student interview, questioning, or arrest?
I would like it to be singular, is that okay, Megan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Oopsie. Oh, this, okay, this would be, alright.
There was interrogation in one of some paragraphs also that we already went over.
Okay.
That's right there, the school related.
So this one. Well, sh- I think she was suggesting here-
Mm-hmm, I think actually suggesting, mm-hmm, should be questioning.
Good question. Okay.
If you go scroll up just a tiny bit, right, uh, go up one more. Um. And then it's right in here. It's right there, custodi- or legal custodian before an interview or interrogation, comma, the parent, comma, guardian. Right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for finding that.
Yeah. So if you scroll down to the very bottom of page two, maybe, I don't know if this will match, bars. No, keep going, keep going, okay, right there, interview, so she wants that to say questioning. Interviews and questioning. Okay, so you come down to the next part-
I just don't like that this questioning is not, oh yeah, mm, it's not plural. It's a thing, I'm sorry. Um, interviews and questioning, I mean, it sounds funny.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okey doke, one more.
So, next sentence where it says parental authority, so it's the fourth line. Sorry, nope, I'm lying, where it says principals and teachers stand in local parentis.
Yep.
Right there, so she said, I would delete this last part. I think it is appropriate to have one of our administrators present and to keep notes because we may use that information for our own district violation sanctions, but it is not a duty to try and guess what the parent would want, should they answer questions or not, how they should answer. Those are still reserved to the parents. If the parents are given notice and choose not to attend, our personnel will be present, follow up with our own district policy. I think it would also be appropriate to give parents notice that district has no control over decisions by the prosecutor's office. SRO on whether or not to issue citations, file charges, and or prosecute matters. We will deal exclusively with our own disciplinary decisions.
Oh my, um, okay.
So she's saying take off, parental authority remains with parents, however, the principal stands in place of parents and students in the school and local parentis apply to discipline or detection, I think she's saying take all that off because we can't dictate what law enforcement does. Cause she says delete the last part of that.
Um, okay, except Lisa's the one that put it in here.
Mm-hmm.
She wants it in here, so what I'm going to do-
So you just wanna put the qualifier in there that the district is not responsible for the prosecutor? I mean, I said that's what she's saying is the district can't, we're not going to, we have no authority or control over if they file charges, if they give citations, if they prosecute, nor do we want to for that matter.
So the in local parentis piece, does that mean, like, does that put any unnecessary liability? If like, the principal makes a call and then the parent comes back and it's like, well, that's not the call I would have made, does that-
What kind of call you mean, like?
Like, I mean, like make a decision, right, on, on behalf of, like, can't get ahold of the parent, the principal standing in and make some type of decision that applies to the discipline and protection of the student in, in that scenario?
Yeah, it could-
Does that put undue-
It would if you, um, like, for instance, if-
Like, if the principal says, go ahead and, you know, question, question the student, or go ahead and, and do this because they can't get ahold of the parents?
I mean, we're allowed to question a kid if the parent, we can't get ahold of the parent, so that's not the liability. Liability would be a situation where, um-
So turning over permission for law enforcement to question, or whatever that, that case maybe?
Go ahead, Jimmy, and talk to the officer, I can see that being a problem. I could, I would see this as, uh, the bigger issue would be that, you know, you have an aunt or uncle and you can't get ahold of parents and you're giving information to them, or you're just disclosing something because ultimately this, whatever happens, we can't control what law enforcement does. Um, so it would be, there, the local parentis is really like, if you couldn't get ahold of a parent, and like, for instance, I've done this several times, I couldn't get ahold of a parent, couldn't get ahold of any emergency contact, so, um, you know, we had to call nine-one-one and-
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, I wasn't gonna send a seven-year-old by themselves to the hospital, but the, you know, EMT said this child has to go.
Yeah.
It's not safe, you know, so I go with the child and tell the parent to get there. But I don't, I can't make any medical decisions, I'm just assisting the medical, that's where it comes in of like, you're gonna be there in place of the parent, I don't get to make the decisions.
So that's not, that's not talking about making decisions as to how that student is really relating to law enforcement in that scenario, okay?
Yeah, it would just be that, but if you know, like, um, law enforcement wants to talk to a child and, I mean, you're gonna, you have to try to call the parents, but at some point we can't impede, so if we can't get ahold of parents and we've done our due diligence legally, we are allowed to allow them to have access.
Okay, okay.
Um, I typically try to not have that happen during school, cause I just feel like it's a disruption to the school environment and as a parent, I feel like parents don't expect their kids to be interviewed by people outside of school personnel during school hours, you know what I mean, so. But there would definitely have been, I mean, when it becomes a safety issue, it happens for sure. Um, and then the one area we have no say so really is CPS.
Yeah.
Unless, especially, and especially if it's a parent situation, so.
And this policy went out to parents already, right?
Mm-hmm.
Was this red part in there?
Mm-hmm.
Did parent, were parents okay with that?
Um, I think there was a lot of feedback that parents felt they don't want their child interviewed, but legally, if we, if, if law enforcement has to, like, we can't stop them. So then we put in there, we do our due diligence to involve parents and try to call. We capitalize the H.
So is the sentence that, right before the purple that says in local parentis applies to discipline and the protection of the student, is that trying to clarify what that sort of means or entails? Because I could see hackles coming up when it says, uh, teachers stand in local parentis to students in the school.
So it would be a scenario of you can't get ahold of a parent, or parents giving you permission, like, I can't leave work, I can't get down there. We're not gonna let a, a law enforcement officer come in and meet with a five-year-old and they don't know, like, we'll have somebody with the child, that's what that essentially means. We're not going to just, if CPS were to come in, we're not just letting some random person talk to a child without one of us present. And we couldn't get ahold of parents.
Okay, so it's not making decisions for the parents, it's more just like being a support system.
From the child, yeah.
Can we say that somewhere, cause I think that would make it less scary.
Well, I don't like this statement either because it's not accurate.
Right, I'm sorry, I think we're talking to it. Stay real quiet.
Cause in local parentis doesn't just apply to discipline and protection of students.
No, the idea is that you're standing for, I mean, you can't make any decisions for, I, like, when I've gone to the, to the hospital, I've done this multiple times, and they're waiting for a parent, or they're in Spokane and, you know, um, the EMTs are like, this child has to go, well, I will go with the child until the parent can get there, I'm just holding their hand, I can't do anything.
Mm-huh.
You know?
Is there like a classic definition of in local parentis that you could put in to clear that? Cause this says, assuming the place or position of a parent, which is not, I don't think what we wanna say.
No.
Or maybe that's not exactly the phrase we wanted to use, cause this already I'm reading says like, this is the legal doctrine under which an individual assumes parental rights, duties, and obligations. Without formal adoption. Yeah, a, a teach, like, an example, a teacher or school administrator may act in local parentis during school day, meaning they have the authority to make decisions for the child as if they were the child's parent. Um, for example, if a child gets hurt at school, the teacher or administrator can make medical decisions for the child. Now, I don't know if that is, I mean, that's from somebody's law website.
I mean, the only medical, and it wouldn't be us making the decision, it would be, um-
Consent to the medical personnel?
Well, we would call nine-one-one, right? And if, uh, the, if the EMTs came, fire department came and they said this is a, we're giving, we're allowing them to make that decision, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause they're the medical professional. We definitely have situations where parents say, I don't wanna do that, and that's fine. We would never say that if, if we had a medical professional saying do this, the only person who would be able to change that would be the parent, not us, and we would never tell them no, you know what I mean? So. But really, the whole, this is-
So in local parentis means in the, the place of a parent or instead of a parent.
Due to the absence or unavailability of parent, I mean, is that like worth, worth adding?
That's the-
Due, due to the absence or unavailable, unavailability of the parent?
But we can't make any decisions for that child. Because reality is, is, as a parent, you don't have a say so either, law enforcement's gonna, you know, do a citation. It's the same concept, like, the only situation that I think, there could be medical situations where the parents could override a medical professional, you could do that in the hospital. Law enforcement, you can't, so that would be the same for us. We're just sitting with the child until a parent can get there, and we wouldn't let a child, um, deal with that on their own.
Yeah, yeah, that totally makes sense.
So I kinda tweaked what she was saying, and I think it still needs to be tweaked more. If the parents are given notice and choose not to attend, um-
I like that.
Child.
Another situation where staff members would have, um, control is, um, Jacqueline, you send your sister to come pick up your kids, but you didn't notify the school, and they're not on the emergency contact. School would not give up your child. You know what I mean, so that's, that's what they mean, it will be, unless I have heard directly from the parent, no one else has access to this kid except for the school until the parent. Those are the type of scenarios they're talking about, not that I can decide to, you know, the kid can ask me if they can go on with their friend, and I can say yes, it's not that scenario. It's just saying that there's a protective measure until parents can get there, that's what it's about.
Okay. I wonder if in that very first red sentence where it says blah blah blah, um, interview if the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian is not present, if we could say like, is not present or cannot be reached, like, something to say, like, we're not trying to say, you're not here, and so we're taking over, it's like, you-
And cannot be-
You're not, yeah, you cannot-
Or unavailable.
Unavailable or something, so it's clear that like, we're trying to let you be here, but if you're not, it can't be.
But sometimes they choose not to.
Right.
And so, in that scenario, we would never let the kid deal with that on their own.
Yeah.
That would be intimidating.
I think that would make it, I just worry that it has a little bit of an appearance problem right now to-
The optics.
Yeah, exactly.
So what we're saying, Jacqueline?
We were talking about adding to the end of the first red sentence, something like, beyond just like, when the pr- parent isn't present, but more also like, can't be, can't be present, or chooses not to be present, something like that.
But could say something like, interviews and questioning conducted by law enforcement for a unit of school or non, violations shall include the principal or his or her designated or any interview of the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian is not present, unavailable, or unable to be reached.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say attend or something, I don't know what reach this one to.
I like attend better.
Yeah. Cause then it's clear, like, we'd prefer you be here, but if you're not.
I, I agree with Jacqueline though, I mean, where it says principals and teachers stand in local parentis to students in school, um, could you put the qualifier for protective measures, cause that's what it is, it's for protective measures.
Yeah.
So like, even at the beginning, that for protective measures, principals and teachers stand in local parentis to students in school, cause that's the lens in which that, you know?
I think like, like, obviously, I test the hearts of anybody, you know, that, that is working with my kids,
Cause you'd be surprised-
but I think, I think that could come across as kind of alarming, yeah.
Yeah, but you'd be surprised how many, like, we'll have a grandma or aunt and uncle and they'll just, you know, and, sorry.
Oh, oh yeah.
And you can't get ahold of the parents.
That's why I'm out there taking notes.
Yeah, she targeted my parents. And you can't get ahold of the parents, and so, I mean, and they get really frustrated. But it's like, I'm sorry, I don't know you, I'm not giving this child to you.
Yeah.
Maybe if we bold that parental authority remains with the parents, you know?
Yeah.
There can be the perception that we're not trying to take anything away, we're trying to explain.
It's a protective.
Right.
We, we also could add, um, parental authority remains with the parents, however, the principal or teacher may stand in place- We we also could add um parental authority remains with the parents, however, the principal or teacher may stand in place. Or something like that, so that it's like, not like, you dropped your kid off at school and now.
There are.
You know, you're out buddy, it's just, wouldn't need it, something like that.
But but that, I mean, the in loco parentis, I get you're saying that it's um in the. Perspective of a protective measure, but the reality is is when those kids are dropped off and transferred over to the school district. The school has now assumed in loco parentis.
Yeah, we've assumed responsibility.
It's not a may situation, it is uh.
If they're hurt, if, yeah, there's a responsibility.
I mean, I I get your may and that I think would be more appealing to some, but that's not the truth.
Yeah, so the protective measures is more the appeal than.
Yeah. I do feel like though we always, you know, we try to call parents as much as we can, we don't. And honestly, we try not to have this kind of stuff happen at school as much as we can, cause it's super disruptive. And that just makes it adversarial with our families.
We left the first quote behind before in loco parentis.
Thank you, I see it.
So not to like get too far down the rabbit hole on this, but. Where we have SROs in the school, which I'm a huge fan of, um. When they're having just conversations with kids as the course of their daily work. And something comes up, now is there like a formal transition to an interview?
That's what the top talks about, specific to you'd have an administrator and a second person there.
So Johnny says something at the lunch table when he's, you know, hanging out with the SRO and then. And then there's, that SR goes to the administrator and then you have the formal aspect of the, okay, alright. I just wanted to make sure that didn't get like to where that was prohibitive in their interactions with the kids.
Right.
Like, okay.
Okay, um, her next comment is extent of district authority.
It's the same comment from above essentially, and she just put it in all caps.
But she's got it under the parent's right to know.
And she's just saying the district has no authority, so you don't know. What law enforcement will or will not do, so she at the very bottom says the district only controls disciplinary decisions made by the district. Such as detention, suspension and expulsion.
Do we need to put something there?
I don't feel like you're alluding that we do have control, so I think she's, it's just a, just. FYI kinda thing, but I don't think that paragraph infers that somehow we do have control.
Okay, cause we could, instead of tagging it onto here, do another paragraph um that just states district authority.
I feel like you already said that though, and you said pursuant to policy thirty three thirty.
We said it a couple of times in here.
The only thing from kind of a very layman's perspective on this. The benefit of the language in that, I think it cleans up any assumption we have about. Where safety issues are involved, you know, like what kind of safety issues are we talking about, I think that paragraph really cleans up the the black and white of that.
Well, and then at the very, in a couple paragraphs.
So the parent right to know, we were talking about safety issues are really only gonna be on a CPS thing. So it kind of gives clarity to where it mentions safety issues in the previous paragraphs that. You're gonna be notified unless it's exactly this, so I mean, just from a layman's perspective, that gives a little bit more boundary of what that looks like.
Okay.
And then the very next um two paragraphs, like where it says arrest and removal, the very bottom of that, and she put it bold. In cases involving reported child abuse of a student where the suspected perpetrator is a member, oh, right there. Did you put that in there or is that Megan's, I thought that was Megan's, so it's it's down there, but maybe it's better served to be up at the parental right to know.
Well, maybe we should have put that in there.
Maybe it's in both.
It could be, um.
I thought it was hers, but I couldn't tell.
Well, maybe we should move parental locus down here under the definitions. So if we put the definition there. It's in place of a parent or instead of a parent when the parent is not present. But then coming back up here to that paragraph or, I lost it, here we are. Interviews in questioning conducted by law enforcement for either school related or non-school related violations. Shall include the principal, his or her designated during the interview if the student's parent guardian or legal custodian is not present. Is unavailable or not able to attend for protective measures, principals and teachers stand in loco parentis to students in school. Parental authority remains with the parent, however, the principal or teacher stands in place of parents when the students are in school period. Does that seem a little more?
I think bolding that parental authority remains with the parent is.
Is important.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
Whatever we decide in terms. On terms should be carried out in the definition, okay. So we do inter- we do clarify what interviewing is, we do not clarify what questioning is. Probably should do that.
Well, right there, it says a question and a student suspected of violating, so could we just change?
Interview and or questioning?
Yeah, I would say it's at the top, interview and or questioning, it's all one and the same.
Was the lawyer making a distinction?
She's saying they're interchangeable, she just doesn't like the word interrogation. She actually said questioning for everything.
So then maybe what she's saying. Is questioning should be the questioning of a student suspected of violating, sorry, instead of interrogating. Probable cause, I don't even think we talked about probable cause in the policy.
It it was like in the original one.
Right.
Probably took it out.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not even highly structured, that's weird.
It was, when I printed it out like from the district website, it was like totally different from the. The version that we were even working on, so it might have been old, old, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's only in here in one place and that's there, okay. Okay, so we've added her comments.
The only other thing that I think that I think policy had a good point is under that parental right to know. I think that bold statement right there, it makes sense that it's connected to that, cause that would be the one scenario.
So moving that sentence?
Or do putting it in both places, but I think it makes sense of parent's right to know that because. In the case of if the perpetrator's the parent.
Right.
And that falls for if the perpetrator's the dad, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowed to tell the mom. I mean, that's iffy, sometimes they do, not always though, depending on.
What's happening.
Mm-hmm, in this scenario. It would be based on the students.
Okay, so where are we gonna add this?
We were talking about adding an under parental right to know. So right there.
Although the last part of the red says unless the student is a victim.
Of course, a sus- suspecting victim of physical or sexual abuse.
But the reality is is we would notify if it, the only time we wouldn't is. If it's the per- if the parent's the perpetrator, if there was a situation where the kid said it was the uncle or grandpa, a hundred percent we'd notify.
Even if they're living in the same household?
Hmm, that would be a law enforcement.
So that's, I mean, that I I don't know if we.
But this is saying we wouldn't and it's there are lots of scenarios where we would notify the parents.
So what about like using like may or like eh not making like a a definite?
Yeah, instead of would not be warranted, may not, I don't.
I think I understand the heart of it, I just don't wanna misrepresent it, that puts us like in a place of, well, you said in your policy that.
Well, and how it is right now, the part that Michelle has highlighted doesn't say that it's the parent doing it, so to me it kinda reads like, so if my kid gets assaulted in a bathroom. Or something, you're not gonna tell me.
My concern is because the only scenario where we wouldn't now, if you had somebody living in the house. I mean, I feel like there have been scenarios where there that I know personally where there was a grandpa in the house, but they did notify the parents.
So what about, so unless the student is a victim or suspected victim of physical and or sexual abuse from somebody. From a family member.
From a family member residing in the house?
Yeah, yeah, or.
To me, that's a law enforcement.
And and would be subject to the determination by law enforcement, or so or something like that?
Yeah, or we delete the highlighted part, leave the black part.
I say you delete the highlighted and just put in cases involving reported child abuse of the student.
There you go.
You could put reported child abuse slash sexual abuse. Where the suspected perpetrator is a member of the student's family, because family could be who's residing, I mean, that to me is somewhat ambiguous.
Yeah. Yeah, and then put put may not be le- legal uh contacting the parent legal or legal custodian. May not be warranted, like maybe putting putting that in there, just just that, like you had said, there's plenty of scenarios where you would contact them. Or or is it better?
Specific to a suspected perpetrator, a member of the student's family.
Okay, but you said sometimes it's the dad and they do tell the mom.
Sometimes, but that's not us, that would be law.
Okay, okay, okay.
When, I mean, the moment there is that in CPS, I'm like, we were not involved at all. Other than we're with the child, but as far as action steps.
Now, do you want it to say would not be warranted, which is just more of a like? Analysis statement, or do you wanna say would not occur, you know?
Parents will be notified in time now, either before or after the student's question by law enforcement official. In cases involving reported child abuse of the student or suspected as a member of the student's family, caution there. You could just say would be at the discretion of.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, cause they're the ones that would dictate the communication.
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely cleans up the expectations a lot better.
Yeah. Yeah, it makes it clear, it's like, it's not our purview here, it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so then down here.
Oh, good call. I should also clean up her comments.
A hundred words, man, it's one word. Okay, so I didn't bold it here because it's bolded down here, I didn't think it needed to be the focal point of the policy. Okay, um, any other changes or comments?
I'll send the whole thing out to admin.
Okay.
For review and then um are you fine if there isn't some, they think that it still goes. To the board meeting and I can give you, or do you want it to come back to policy?
This policy, I want it to go away. The highlighted area though, did we ever get clarification? Because.
I asked that question.
Did she answer it?
Let me see. I feel like she was vague, don't you remember?
I'm pretty sure we've asked multiple times and have it, I mean, I'm like, I feel like it was answered kind of vague. Was the yellow part from um ISBA or what, where did it?
Uh-uh, it was part of the policy, but yet it co- the policy then contradicts itself. Um, because we're saying we're gonna be there for the kid unless.
Right.
And it's like, no, the premise is we're going to be there.
So I've had scenarios where CPS started to kick me out with, you know, with a sexual situation and it was a parent. And I was like, yeah, I'm not leaving this baby, so I'm so sorry. Um, okay, this is what she said, I, my question was. Um, another question we have is specific to CPS and illegal authority regarding access to buildings, students and whether staff is allowed to be present during their questioning. We are wondering if there are any new guidelines or updates regarding CPS that we should be made aware of. This is what her response was, there is a new statute requiring parents be notified of a student interview with an SRO, but it is not extended to CPS. In fact, the statute specifically states that in case of injury to a child, you do not have to alert the parents of the SRO interview. A public school shall notify a student's parent or legal guardian if a student has been or may be questioned by school resource office, although unless the child is a victim, a suspected victim of child abuse. Um, we separately are authorized to withhold records relating to abuse and neglect. A policy shall not prohibit parents or legal guardians from assessing any of their children's education and health records. Unless such documentation relates to physical abuse, abandonment or neglect. As to district personnel being present, I think I just made proposed changes to this policy, which does contemplate district personnel being present. However, my recommendation is to not have district personnel attend CPS interviews. Unless they are requested, do attend by CPS staff, Idaho Code generally separately requires that interviews be recorded. Idaho code generally separately requires that interviews be recorded and the CPS agents have the discretion of when and how to inform parents. All of that to say, our role is generally limited, giving them a private space, not involving ourselves in that investigation.
I think parents would be a heck of a lot more upset about us saying CPS shows up and we let them. You know, have a private room with the kid versus having somebody they at least have a rapport and trust with. So, I mean, I think, you know, having that in loco parentis, you're stepping in as as. The parent, because the parent cannot be contacted now, not because you didn't, not because you tried and couldn't get a hold of him, but couldn't be contacted due to the restraints of. This notification situation, so you're in in you're in loco parentis and I I think as. For lack of a better word, aggressively as you can hold that ground and making sure that you're in there with the student, the better.
Yeah, I, I mean.
So, does she state that there is law that allows? The Department of Health and Welfare to demand that school personnel be. Um, absent from their interview with students on student grounds?
She quotes it actually. Um, she is saying thirty-three dash, do you want to pull up? Idaho code thirty-three dash six zero zero one. But then Michelle, this is just for, this is making synopsis of those policies or that policy.
Oh, good lord. This one's not, I don't think gonna have the CPS thing in there. I don't think this will answer the question.
Well, she's pulling out, which one did she pull out? She pulled out six and then three.
Public schools, okay, three, a policy shall not prohibit parents or legal guardians from accessing any of their child's, okay.
Unless there's physical abuse and it's.
I don't think about the staff that would be present. Right.
Nope, and then she says six.
A public school shall notify a student's question.
I would tell you, this still doesn't say that we can't be present.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, what governs, is there really a rule for? They have to have their, they have to have laws, what part of the code? Good lord. I don't think you have. Title fifty-six.
Says the department statutes are found in title thirty-nine here.
Yeah, title thirty-nine?
Title thirty-nine is fifty-six, it says. There you go.
Holy Hannah, there's a lot on there I just don't wanna know about. Your real disease, what?
What's that? Are you on fifty-six?
I'm on thirty-four, I mean.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Okay, then I'll look at fifty-six.
Okay, thank you. I don't think there's gonna be anything there.
Yeah, I don't see anything, are you on fifty-six now?
No, I, my nurse consented treatment. Um, this is. It's not wild, I think.
Department of Health and Welfare. Fifty-six, chapter ten is all health and welfare.
I don't see anything in thirty-nine that has to do with what we were looking for.
Uh, fifty-six, uh, chapter ten is all about health and welfare, health and welfare.
Authorized actions.
Agency minimum standards. More that's public assistance.
I'm in Idaho statute sixteen, which is the Child Protective Act. I'm not saying I found the answer, but it's at least seems more pertinent than the other stuff.
In under fifty-six one zero nine, it says. Nope. I feel like there should be one specific to schools.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an attorney procedure?
Oh, reporting abuse, there's nothing, it just says. They've got, um, it needs to be reported within twenty-four hours. Then it doesn't say what they could do. I really don't think they're entitled. I mean, that just doesn't.
Yeah, that's her recommendation right there. I'd have a really hard time with that.
So what if? What if our community supports not adopting her recommendation? Does that put us in some legal quandary? I mean, the last thing, you got a kid that's already been traumatized, you wanna hand him over to a stranger without anybody, I mean, for Pete's sake.
Well, I don't think there's statutes that support that, I just think that's her, she's just saying, I mean, from a school district, you're not responsible.
Yeah.
But I don't know how you.
Well, and see.
Yeah, as a parent, I I, I mean. As mama's heart, I mean, that's like, I hugely disagree, I mean, I I would want with any kid, you know, I mean, I work with kids all the time. Any of them has been through a tough thing, I would want them to have somebody they can at least. Have a relationship with in that room with them.
And CPS can't do shelter care, it can only be law enforcement.
Right.
So, so they typically, if that happens, they're gonna call law enforcement.
Well, and I just don't understand. There would have to be something that governs their authority, allowing them to come onto s- the school property. And assume authority that's not granted to them anywhere, and then we're just saying, okay, take our kid in and have whatever conversation.
I'm gonna look at our policies and see what, um, statute.
But Lisa did say, she said this has always been in the policy, but she is bothered by the fact that it contradicts the policy. Cause well, all throughout the policy, we're saying, we're here for your kid, we're here for your kid, we're here for our kid, but not really, because we can get thrown out of the room.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm looking right now in the Idaho Administrative Code of the.
Idaho, so you're looking at Idaho.
Oh, okay. For Child and Family Services, and it's like their rulebook, it seems like. Yeah. And it says, when talking about assessment of a child. Um, it says in a manner that protects all children involved from undergoing any necessary unnecessary traumatic experiences, which it seems like having a friendly adult present would be. Not as traumatic. Exactly. Um, and then it says in a neutral, non-threatening environment. Which also, if you had a. So holding it at school would be, could be considered neutral and non-threatening. And but she wouldn't restrict having. Correct. Somebody they know. So anyway, I'm not seeing anything in here that says.
I don't know what's happening.
School personnel are out.
I could understand where law enforcement might have that authority, but they're gonna be able to.
Right.
To to speak, but but to say that Department of Health and Welfare.
Law that Michelle just pulled out talks about law enforcement does have that authority.
Yeah, but I I would not want to grant that to the to CPS or Department of Health and Welfare with. Unless absolutely legally bound to do so.
Well, and this says specifically that if law, that law enforcement can take the child into custody.
They're the only ones that can.
So it does, so if CPS can't do that, then I don't think they can say you have to leave.
So in my experience is what what's happened is, um. CPS has come and they wanna interview a child and the heart, so I I've had, I mean, it's happened a dozen times. Um, oftentimes, we have no idea, they, we don't have a heads up, it's happening, we don't know what's coming, they'll just walk in and say, hey, we're gonna interview this kid. Off, sometimes the kid's not even there, they, I mean, we are totally blindsided, have no idea. We don't know who called the referral, we don't know where it came from, oftentimes.
So you don't get a heads up from law enforcement, any of the time?
So law enforcement doesn't typically come initially, so law enforcement could come for a separate issue, CPS typically will come, they're gonna do their initial kind of interview. We may or may not get a heads up depending, I, there's been times where I have, there's more often than not, I haven't. They do show up, I've always, um, requested that I'm gonna be there. And I haven't had anybody really push back on it, so I've always been present when they've interviewed or our school counselor, once somebody, an adult's available. Um, and then when, if they determine that it warrants, um, a shelter care, they have to call law enforcement. Law enforcement has to take custody of that child for the twenty-four hours until CPS can find placement, that's how it works.
Okay, so. Do we legally have to grant them the interview at all? I mean, what authority do they do they come into the school with? I guess that's a, that's a bigger question. I mean, not that I, I recognize there are kids that we, you know.
Yeah.
Even even want CPS to get involved, I mean, like I I get that there's those scenarios, but, I mean.
I hear you.
I don't want there to be some presumed authority that you have to just keep them.
Do you want me to re-ask that same question too?
Well, her answer is district staff just shouldn't be in the interview.
But the question about do we have to grant access? Well, it says title sixteen, chapter sixteen, it says. That any physician resident on a hospital, staff, intern, nurse, coroner, school teacher, daycare personnel, social worker, or other person having reason to believe that a child under the age of eighteen years. Has been abused, abandoned, or neglected, or who observes a child being subjected to conditions or circumstances that would reasonably result in abuse, abandonment, blah blah blah. Has shall report or cause to be reported within twenty-four hours. So is there, like, they have to do that within twenty-four hours, so probably.
Right.
It's a duty to report, but they're probably thinking like, because they're legally binding to report it in twenty-four hours, they. Probably don't have anything that.
No, what happens is someone reports it and then the social worker from the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare showed up. To conduct the interview, to determine if there's any basis to what's been reported.
And for school age kids, they do it at school because they, if it's, if they think it's about a parent.
It's easier. Right.
It's easier.
So, it would, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have to keep this on the policy, because there's no.
But that law enforcement, I mean, it makes sense to leave, leave that piece, that law enforcement may may exclude, but. If we can't find any legal reason to give Department of Health and Welfare that authority.
Well, I think they have legal reason, I, my understanding is we have never been allowed to deny them access, they're the one and only that. Like law enforcement, we can ask them to, if they wanna interview a kid, you know, if it was an outside, a non-school related incident, we can say, please do this ad because it's disruptive to learning.
I understand not denying them access, but but I don't want to.
The question is, we can't deny law CPS.
I don't want to allow them to not have a school administrator present unless there's some legal reason they're not gonna come up with this, so why not?
And I don't think there is, I think we're, I don't.
Yeah, I think we're fine, you know, just taking that off.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
Um, with the understanding that, you know, we were gonna, we're gonna be in loco parentis and if they're gonna talk to the kid, then we're gonna be present. And if they have issue with it, then they need to take it up with administration.
But part of the reason why I asked the question is, would, in my experience, more often than not, the referral comes outside and it's not from the school. But then when the kid gets interviewed from the school, you know, so let's just say it's unfounded, let's just say it's Jekyll and it's unfounded, didn't happen. In their mind, we were the ones that called.
Right.
Because it happened at school.
Right.
And we could have, we don't, I mean, other than the person sitting in the interview, we have no idea what happened, we don't even know the the person who called oftentimes.
Yeah.
Right.
But, so, in that effort to protect those relationships. You know, this makes it harder because now that parent is, because CPS doesn't always even tell them who did the notification, the initial referral.
Right, sure, sure.
So the assumption is it's, so it just, I mean, I've even tried to push back a little bit of like, does this really have to happen here?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, and I've been told yes, but I'm not a follower, but that's the hard part, because more often than not, it has nothing to do with the school.
Yeah.
I mean, it called, we don't know the person, I mean, we just happen to have a kid and this is the easiest place to get access because they're only where they're.
Right, right.
So. That's the part I struggle with.
Yeah.
Cause it just damages that relationship.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could say like, not who it was, but it was not related to the school.
Not the ER doctor, cause you didn't consent to the COVID test.
Well, one thing that I do think is, um, two things, maybe, oh, sorry. What if we just at least put it out there that the department and law enforcement may use? So that way, um.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We're highlighting the fact, they can come in and do an interview here.
Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're.
We had anything to do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I will always encourage the administrators to try not to have it at school as much as they can.
Right.
I mean, I want, like, I mean, you know my relationship with law enforcement, I, I, I want to encourage the most
For sure.
open and involved relationships with law enforcement, but, but also, you know, those relationships.
My husband's a retired cop, I know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
From the, it, it does make it hard.
Yeah.
And, you know, the ripple effect of that is hard, and so, um, there's the happy medium.
Okay. All right, which would then lead down into the next paragraph. And I think we say this, like, three, if not four or five times, about, um, in cases involving, it's the same statement. We've said it three times at least tonight in this, so it's in there, I mean, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind hitting a home run on that one, cause I think this is one of those policies that, that you have the potential to take some serious heat on.
Yeah. Okay, so do we think this is good?
So my question is, is I will send this out to administrators. I, we can bring it back to policy next Thursday, because then if there's any, one more day that had any feedback, and then you could still, are you posting on Wednesday? For, for the board meeting, or are you posting on Friday, Monday? So we could still, if there were any changes.
Okay.
I don't think there will be, but if there are.
Okay.
So I will bring this, I'll send it out and then bring it back to the next policy, just for one last, I know you wanna, I wanna beat them.
I do. Um, no, forty-four ten. I guess all throughout here, we refer to police of law enforcement. Or call of the police, um, we call them officers. Oh, I guess we do, police officer, police questioning.
Like the question of jurisdiction, because some of us are in, you know, like a zone where it's not necessarily local police officers, but rather like the sheriff's department, is that, is that a confusion there?
No. Um, I would just, this one jumps right into investigations and arrests by police. But, uh, does she have any input on this one?
Yeah, she, her comment was, um, that one language piece. Hold on, pull it back up.
Okay.
Um. Just trying to find one, I mean, I emailed her several times, trying to find out how she responded to. Uh, right here, um. Or not. Okay, this is what she said. Um, I tend to agree that these two policies largely cover the same issues. The only real difference is being which outlines the potential criminal activity will be reported to law enforcement. I do think that that statement is useful to maintain in policy, that's all she says.
Okay.
So I agree that is, we could do away as long as we just denote that criminal activity will be reported. My question was, we have two policies that are very similar here, whether if we need both. And if so, what is the expectation of keeping them separate? And that's when she said, I tend to agree that the policies largely cover the same.
The only difference is, this is in community relations. Which is letting the public know, would the public know to go look under students for arrests?
Could be other ones specific to students.
Correct.
Could you just basically get rid of all of this and just reference the other policy? And just say, you know, please see policy such and such, so you can keep a tab under community relations to direct them to that policy? I don't know if that's how yours, how it's organized or not, but.
Yeah, I got what you're saying.
Or keep them both and just cross-refer, cross-reference the policies at the bottom, maybe you already did that.
Actually, this one doesn't happen on here. Oh, I like, it does. I don't know that this one does.
Yeah.
Oh, it does, okay, good, that's a plus. This is just pretty straightforward about investigations and arrests made by police of students.
I mean, I guess my argument would be, for community purposes, I mean, if it's not a student, we're not taking the lead on it, and we don't have a part other than we'd be a witness to it. I mean, if somebody came and did something on our school grounds, it would be reported and that would be the extent of it, then it's in law enforcement's hands, cause they're not assuming it.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Like someone drives in your parking lot and crashes, it's not.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you.
We would be the witness and we would notify law enforcement that this happened. But aside from that, we don't have any authority outside of the facility itself.
It does seem like there's some different things covered in this one that aren't in the other one.
I just don't like, we keep bouncing back and forth between police and law enforcement officers, so.
Yeah. Or personnel as well.
All right, let's clean that part up and then, um.
I have a question, but I'll, the very first sentence, is there a need for that sentence? Since this is specific to community?
Cause if it's revolved to students, they're gonna go to thirty-five, forty-five.
Gotta go pick up a kid.
It's the best idea.
It also really.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter to you.
Okay, I apologize if I'm kind of late when you catch on here, um. So, this is still referencing the student though, so then is it necessary to have all of that here? Like, like you, what you're saying is, if this is talking about how the, the community aspect of it, then.
I mean, I honestly feel like you could have the little tiny tab bit of the sentence at the very beginning. Um, and then there might be some, but all of that could go under the student one.
And, and is, and.
Mm-hmm. You change officials.
Oh, the sucker. These are saying the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is what's in the other policy though.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just to the interest of all the effort that you put into, you know, the other five or six pages that addresses that, I don't know, either, either it's gonna have to be like, almost exactly a duplicate, so that you're not or, or just keep that, that bit there and then just reference the other policy for student relations.
Highlighted stuff is from thirty-five, forty-five.
Okay, that you just copied and pasted over here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what's being said in the policy is, okay, I understand now. Okay, so these highlighted segments were being copied and pasted from thirty-five, forty-five. So we need to decide if we want to, cause that was the task I put her on, was making sure the language didn't conflict. So, from that perspective, if you take this out and begin this paragraph with law enforcement officers, she'll only be allowed to conduct an interview in the school if they can show that special circumstances exist, or if the interview is at the request of the school. The determination should be made by the principal or superintendent. We can take that first section out. Or we can leave the, the highlighted section, cause it's paralleling the other. I don't know.
I actually think you could take out, I would leave, when a suspected violation of criminal law has occurred on school grounds, it would be that whole part.
Yeah.
I would take out all of the rest of it, cause all the rest of it is what we have in thirty-five, forty-five for students.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
The only other bit that I'm, I might.
There's a couple pieces at the bottom.
Yeah, but, and I think I just might, even if it's, if it's redundant, I might leave in just, just on the community side of it that, um,
I like the eight.
Trying to minimize disruption, like, that, that bit, it, it might be.
That part, the second part.
Yeah, just the principal and her dis, dis, dis.
I would leave that part.
You would leave both of these parts here, under this section.
I would cross out all of that though.
All of what?
The, if a law enforcement officer, cause that's specific to a student, and we already say all that in the other one. And then scroll down. Um, I would leave that. Um, uh, so then I would, I would, uh, cross out C and D. Cause we say it right up there, the, right in there, the disruption piece, we already say that. It's the principal, his or her, shall work together to coordinate efforts and minimize or prevent such disruption in cases of student abuse and interrogation.
Hold on a second, I'm, oh, shoot. I hear what I did.
Well, I have to change the interrogations language also.
Okay. Although, maybe not, and let me explain why. I think, um, this should stay.
Okay.
I think that could become a B.
Mm-hmm.
The writer out, we should take reasonable steps first, at the same time, cooperating, law enforcement officer. Okay, so this one could be taken out, cause it's parading the same paragraph. Uh, law enforcement should not be allowed to talk about the school. It should remain, I think that needs to stay there, cause from the lens of, we're, we're just sort of telling the community, this is how it unfolds.
Right. I actually think, um, I would just say it should remain in administrative, I would cross out while school personnel locate the student, because I mean, what if it was a staff member, like, you know? It's not specific to just a student.
It should, it should be conducted in a proper.
Yeah, that's appropriate.
Didn't we say that up here though?
Yeah, out of the view of others.
So.
So on C, law enforcement officers should not be allowed, is that, is the word. So, on C, law enforcement officers should not be allowed, is that, is the word should leaving space for extenuating circumstances? In which, you know, perhaps it's.
This is specific to an investigation where there's, they wanna invest in, question somebody.
Okay. Well, we're talking about arrests in the title though.
Yeah, but even in an arrest situation, like, we would go get the student, we would never let law enforcement go to a classroom and arrest a kid in front of them.
But were you talking about, like, what if it's a staff, you know, were you talking about?
But we would still pull that, we wouldn't let the, I mean, there, there would be some semblance of privacy, we wouldn't wanna, you know.
You would. Okay. Okay. I, I get that, I, I, that's why, I'm just wondering, like, the language there, if you change it to shall, then it's like a definite, it's not gonna happen?
Yeah, please don't be roaming around the school buildings. Um, with respect to, um, looking for a student or a person to interview.
Okay.
If they have a warrant, we're gonna ask them to stay in the office and.
Okay.
So we can bring the student, so we're not embarrassing her.
Yeah.
I think eight, F is fine. Because it could be a witness situation, it could be, you know, so you're just reminding everybody.
Okay, so this is from the other policy, so we should take it off, in the sense that it's, we're saying the same thing.
Mm-hmm, right above it.
Right. Okay, so if the parents are not, are notified and able to attend, they should be allowed to be present at the interview. Should be present at the interview, should not take part in any questioning. Administrator should at all times remain a neutral observer, so interviews conducted by police.
That's all from the last, we struck a bunch of that out of noise.
It is.
Mm-hmm. I would just strike that out.
Okay. And then that's it, what I don't understand is why there's no other. They're only listing two policies, they're not listing any, um, legal authority. I think those two should be included here.
I would agree.
This one.
Remember, that's community specific.
Right, but we also talk about.
Yeah, you're right, we talk about kids, yeah.
I mean. Yeah.
So, when we talk about law enforcement not being able to roam about the school, in the context of our SROs, is that?
That's separate.
Okay.
And if they're in their building and doing their thing, but this is specific to.
Then they're considered staff in conjunction with their positions.
But if, when you have a situation where now there's an arrest.
Contractors, not staff.
Okay.
You have a situation where there was a, you, there, there was a criminal act, you know there's, there's an arrest, or something, whatever, that whole, we're doing that in private and we're not, um, we're not having people around the school and pull kids out of class and.
I, I understand the intent of that, my, my question is if, if we're, is that confusing to people reading that and then they say, oh, well, you know, our, our police officer, which, you know, the kids, our police officer came and, and, you know, asked Johnny to leave class and then, you know, later he was arrested, is that? Are we misrepresenting that by saying that law enforcement won't be allowed to roam about the school looking for a student? Like, are, if they, you know, in the uniform, does that have the appearance that we're?
But when they're acting as an SRO, they're not wearing the same law enforcement hat as if they were given,
Uh-huh.
um, if their captain or whomever, you know, called out a code for them to go arrest some student.
Okay.
And they weren't at the building, so like, if, if they had a call to come to the building, they're then in a law enforcement hat, not SRO, and they wouldn't be allowed to just go wander around the building, at least I would hope, they would not be allowed to do that. And maybe that needs to be clarified with administrators, so that they understand the intention. That when SROs are not in their SRO capacity, they have to be treated just like every other law enforcement officer.
Well, I think so, I think the delineation is the moment there's a criminal act, they're, they're a law enforcement officer at that point.
Okay.
That's how we define it.
So just, I know it's time to wrap up.
Yeah, do your stuff.
Yes.
Do your stuff.
No.
Um, just to clarify, so thirty-five, forty-five, we'll bring back after I get, I'll have the admin team look at it one more time, and then forty-four, ten can go to the April board meeting.
Yes.
Okay, and so then next week, we'll finish up thirty-five, forty-five and then go back to the animal one.
Yes, and the, with thirty-five, forty-five should be the forms also that need to, do we need to?
The whole thing has to go. Mm-mm, all of it is stable, so, once I have the admin look at all of that, then we are good, then all of that'll go for the board.
No. Yes.
For the April board meeting.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you for letting me, since I was a slacker.
Yeah.
I've just been a slacker, because I can't do the two things, all right, so we're gonna go ahead and end policy, it is six twenty.